Good evening, Rockland. And welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, March 25th, 2019. First on this evening's agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes of March 11th, 2019.
No jury approve?
No jury.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, there's a vote. Ladies and gentlemen, seeing nothing under correspondence, under audience, we are blessed to be an elite company tonight. And I mean that. We have with us tonight, the nine-time consecutive, I believe, state champion, Rockland High School Girls Cheerleading Team with us tonight. Welcome, girls. Congratulations.
There's a lot of bling in those jackets.
Yeah.
I'm surprised they didn't come in.
Tumbling.
Tumbling.
Welcome. So I don't know if the microphone picked it up, but Mr. Garofalo just had a great comment, and he said, "There's a lot of bling in those jackets." Well deserved.
You can never have too much bling.
Well deserved.
Spoken like a smart girl.
How many rings are on your hand?
Six.
Six, wow. Now, was it nine consecutive? Is that correct?
No. Two consecutive.
Okay.
Yep, two back-to-back this year.
Great, nine total.
Nine total.
Wow, that's amazing. What an amazing accomplishment for you, Coach. Girls, congratulations to you, because despite the other eight, this one is yours, right?
Yeah.
This is your team, this is your group, this is your achievement, and you earned it. You know, I had the chance to see your routine, your winning routine, on video. I wasn't there, unfortunately. But for anybody that says that cheerleading isn't a sport, I dare them to watch that video.
Thank you.
The things that you folks do, I would, I don't know what other program in this school could have, you know, some of the athletic feats that you do on that map. So, congratulations, you know, you're amazing. I know there's some questions and comments from the rest of the committee as well.
I would just say, you guys put fear in all of the other groups to get up there. I've sat there. My granddaughter, who cheers for Ashville, who, I shouldn't say this, she's not here, so I can say it. She doesn't hold a candle. I mean, you guys are just awesome. And you guys beat Whitman-Hansen, which is super, too. They're good, too, and you guys, you can see, I, well, I don't know much, but I watch you guys, and you can see the difference, really.
They have the second highest score in the state this year.
That's unbelievable. Just unbelievable.
And we're talking about nine state championships, but what else happened last weekend?
We won New England.
Yeah.
So, about six of the New England states bring the top three candidates from each
state to this event, and we were able to win there as well.
Now, how many New England's is that for you?
Uh, two.
Two?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Two for you. I just assumed that she's won everything at this point, and she's got six rings. I mean, it's, I don't know, no one else is ever probably gonna be able to come close. How many do you have?
Well, we have six. We have four.
But the freshmen can beat me.
They can get eight.
They can get eight.
We're gonna get six. I like you. We're getting six.
So you two are the challenged out?
Yeah, I feel. Yeah. I hope they beat me.
Well, I mean, right, if they beat your six, then...
I hope they do.
That's obviously huge, right?
Huge.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you beat Tom Brady, you beat Tom Brady, right? I mean, we have our own goat.
You know, you make your community proud, you make your school proud, I'm certain your parents are proud. You made us proud, so congratulations. Great, great job.
Civil job.
Great job, but I'm sure the school committee will look forward to seeing you back here next year for the state championship. Absolutely.
At least twice.
Set the date now.
Put it on the agenda for next year.
Let's hope, right?
Excellent.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
How many hours a week do you guys practice?
Um, typically about two hours a day. Yep, Monday through Friday.
People have no idea the work that you put in.
They run ten miles every two weeks. They have a set schedule. They, you know, do that themselves. They set very high standards.
That's tremendous. Well, it shows.
It does.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Oh, look at that, Rockland State Champ, huh?
Well, the rest of the agenda is hard to follow.
Especially the superintendent's report.
Good luck with that.
No bling.
It's gonna be riveting.
It's gonna be riveting.
Tough shoes to fill, Alan, but the next item on our agenda is item four, our superintendent's report, Dr. Cron.
Thank you. So, on Wednesday, the 20th, along with members of PMA and the SMMA team, our architects and our project managers, Rich Penny and I participated in a meeting of the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee, or FAS, of the MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority in Boston. The topic was our preferred design for the Jefferson Elementary Project and its relationship to our educational plan. I had the privilege of leading off the meeting with a five-minute summary of our educational plan and its relationship to our preferred design. MSBA was extremely complimentary of our education plan and only had a few questions and comments regarding our preferred option. So we were told after this meeting that by SMMA, who's been through dozens of these meetings, that ours went as well as could ever be expected. So the work that our, I'm even more confident in our project managers and our architects at this point guiding us to this point in the process. So during the meeting, the topics we discussed were the MSBA's appreciation of our education plan, the distribution of special education spaces, size and function of the proposed courtyards, function of a makerspace area for grades one and two. They had some questions about the proposed location of music in relation to guidance, the music rooms with sharing a wall with the guidance suite. They were concerned that maybe if they're banging on instruments in the walls. So there were a few, a few small things like that that we discussed, but overall, it was a very, very positive meeting, and we're moving on to the next phase of our project. So very, very good news. And second, and finally, we presented on Wednesday night this past week, along with Mr. Phelps of the school committee and school business manager, Mrs. Jane Hackett, and technology director, Tim Wells. We presented our preliminary budget to the Rockland Finance Committee. During the presentation, I featured Medicaid and our hope that more money can be collected by the schools in this area, money that could be used to offset the rising costs of special education and homeless transportation. I'd like to thank the entire finance committee for their time and efforts, but a special thanks to John Pumphrey, the chair of the finance committee, and Mark Pulsifer and Dan Ryan, who are our liaisons to the finance committee. They've put in a tremendous number of hours interacting with Jane and with me about our budget, and the energy and effort they've put into this process was, was quite satisfying. We appreciate it very much. The town should know that they have a very dedicated and smart finance committee working on their behalf, and I, for one, appreciate them. That's my report.
Excellent. I would absolutely echo your comments about the finance committee. It is maybe the most critical committee in any community. You know, they are the nuts and bolts of what happens and what we're able to do and the services we're able to provide our taxpayers and our town, and our community is extraordinarily blessed with the individual that we have on that team. I know, Jane, they work very well with you and you with them, and they're fine people, and they're doing a fine job. Mr. Phelps, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just still wanna say how professional you two handled yourselves. I've been to a couple of these finance committee meetings over the years.
Oh, yeah.
And I think by far, not only the, yuck, wrong word, performance, but the finance committee, I've never seen such a professional group. They asked spot-on questions.
Yeah.
You gave spot-on answers. It went in very, very well. And, I mean, I have a lot of respect for those people, too. They do an awful lot of hard behind-the-scenes work to make things happen, and we've always been very cooperative, too. There's only so much of the pie, and we can only do what we can do. But I walked out of there feeling very good, the way we were treated and the job that both of you did. I was impressed.
Here, here. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Cron. Next on tonight's agenda, we have some reports to approve. Under item A, we have the financial reports for February. We'll be entertaining five motions to approve reports for the school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, the cafeteria, and the daycare.
Five motions.
Five seconds.
We have five motions in five seconds. All in favor? That is a vote.
We'll make a comment on that, too. I've been here for a couple of weeks, and there's two areas that really have improved considerably. One is the cafeteria, and, you know, and how they handle, and the revenues and the cost and the monies and they handle that. But the daycare, I remember sitting here at these meetings, going on and on about the daycare. What do we keep it? What do we do with it? You know, it was losing money and stuff like that. And that's a complete turnaround of that, and it's a good, they've done a good job with it, you know, you guys have done a good job with them. I appreciate that.
Janet Tate and Marissa Baltis, they deserve all the credit.
It's just unbelievable. What a turnaround.
I commented to someone today, this is my last meeting, but it isn't my last meeting, but in the time that I've been here, in the six years that I've been here, this is, that is one of the things that I think that this committee should be proudest of, and that group of people, Janet and Marissa, the work that they've done at that daycare from what it was really not long ago administratively to what it is now, and its, you know, financial health is just absolutely remarkable. I mean, it really is a success story, so it's great to see.
We spent hours and hours on that thing. Great job.
Without a doubt. Absolutely. Well, thank you very much, all. Next up, we have monthly reports for January and February, and there are eighteen of them, so we'll be entertaining eighteen motions. So pardon me while I take a deep breath to name them all. The first will be art, and we also athletic, computer technology, daycare, deans, English five to eight, English nine to twelve, family consumer science, health, family, uh, health, physical education, math five to eight, math nine to twelve, music, radio, TV station, science, social studies, special education, nine to twelve, middle school, and foreign language.
Eighteen motions.
We have eighteen motions. Do we have eighteen seconds?
Eighteen seconds.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that is a vote. And next up, our favorite part of any school committee meeting is curriculum corner. And tonight, we have an item on there that I'm really excited about seeing, because we have some good folks in it, is the Rockland Middle School Math Club. Welcome.
Let me invite up Mrs. Howes and Mr. McDonald as well, because they're a huge part of this, and I'm gonna let the kids do all the work, as I always do, but I just wanna say, I am...
It's not you, Miss McDonald. It's overrated.
I am so proud of our kids and our staff for taking a chance and being a part of a new program that we've never done before, that we were invited to, that took place in Hanover. So, couldn't be prouder, I think, I hope we're gonna do this again, and they have a lot of great information and some other things to share.
So go ahead.
He's got it all balanced.
On March 13th, the Rogers Middle School sent ten students from grades six, seventh, and eighth to compete at the Sells Shore Middle School Math Tournament 2019 held at Hanover Middle School. The ten members of the team qualified by staying after school with Ms. Howes and Mr. McDonald and practicing sample test questions. The first meeting for the math team, over forty-five sixth graders attended to try to qualify. They worked hard on sample problems to be chosen. We only had two sixth graders openings for the teams, two seventh graders, and six eighth graders, and five alternates. Vivian will now read the name of the students.
Tharoma's team included Sidney Blaney, Emma Cameron, Mahin Choudhury, Isabella DeFilippou, Sarah Donnelly, Kaylee LaRocco, Manuel Marin, Lexi McKenna, Vivian Nguyen, and Emma Radzik. Now Sarah will read the names of the alternate members. The five alternates that worked hard and were prepared to jump in if needed were Evan Gerard, Javin Maddos, Lena Nassif, Fiona Overstreet, and Tyler Williams. So there were six local towns who entered the tournament, Rockland, Norwell, Hanover, Hanson, Pembroke, and Situate, and the meet started with an individual round. Students worked independently for thirty minutes on ten questions, trying to earn as most, like, the most points possible for the Rockland Middle School team. And we couldn't use calculators. We also couldn't use calculators for the team event. And when the time was up for the individual event, they submitted their scores to the proctor for scoring. After a short break, the second portion of the meet began, and then all ten students of the middle school split into two teams of five, and we completed a team event, which lasted only twenty minutes. We worked together as a team on very challenging math problems, and we could talk to one another and use multiple strategies, but again, we couldn't use a calculator. We had to submit our final scores as answers, and they all added up to earn our team points. Once scored, a presentation was made for the top individual and top team scorers, and all students received a certificate for their participation. We would like to share with you some of the questions that were part of the competition. The first question is on the slide and the worksheet. It was one of the individual questions we had to answer. We will be giving all of you the question and a pencil. We had thirty minutes to answer as many problems as we could. We will give you a few minutes. The problem you're trying to answer is number three on the worksheet.
Can I declare that item of the meeting out of order?
I make a motion that we...
We don't have to answer the question? I second.
Chuck, I'm gonna draw you a dog, okay?
Can I use a calculator?
Thank you. No.
What's even better here, are you guys allowed to use calculators in school? You know what's funny? When I had Mrs. Howes, we couldn't. So...
They didn't have calculators back then.
Number three.
Not when you were there. You had them.
Oh, I'm not, we got thirty minutes? Oh, come back in.
Thirty minutes?
Here's a calculator. I'm better with equations than I am word problems.
Oh, you are.
We're doing number three.
Whoever on the school committee answers the first one's gonna win that. Like the school committee.
You're the teacher. You should be getting this.
I don't think this is...
Come on, Jane, what's the answer?
Today is Tuesday, like this. What this is?
That's a toughie.
It is. Without a calculator.
Are you guys ready for the answer?
Yes.
Yeah, let's go.
Just wanna make sure I'm right.
Wait, should we see what Jane had first? She has it right.
What's the answer, Jane? I was getting there, thirty seconds.
Annie would be twenty-four years old.
I had twenty-four, but then I got the last part.
That's exactly what I had. It's amazing.
I got zero.
I know.
Total failure.
I overanalyze where I'm talking. They ruin me.
So, as you are answering these, do you answer, you answer them collaboratively, and you talked about the answer, or you did them all individually, and...
So we had to work on them, these questions specifically, we had to work on them individually, and then we came together for a team event. You guys will be doing a team event together, and we had a shorter amount of time on that one.
I see. I see.
So you don't get these when, you get them handed to you when you walk in the door there? They don't give them to you?
No, we actually sat down and they let us have snack first.
Oh, that was good. Full belly.
And then you go.
And how many of these, as a group, at the end, did you, did you come up with the correct answer for?
I think, yeah.
As a team, both groups got three correct.
Wow, that's great.
Did you get this one correct? Good. Go dogs.
Was it fun?
Good. Next one.
Next one.
Oh, we have another one.
Ah, there's more.
That was one of the harder questions for the individual one.
Oh, yeah. That is. Seventy-one.
We're a little ahead.
I know.
We're through them.
All right.
I feel like I'm at home doing my...
B is either zero or five. I mean, so...
Hey, next one.
Answer?
It's eleven.
So A must be six.
We're ready for the next slide, please.
Calling you to do nice for someone.
Now, this would be the team event, and then this is a sample of one of the questions that we did for the team event.
So you guys will be there when she puts her question on.
How many nice numbers are there?
Thank you.
Let's not invite the other team.
Can we call a friend? I wanna phone a friend. Thank you.
So here's the sample question. It's, "Call an integer nice if the sum of the positive integers less than or equal to that integer is divisible by that integer. For example, three is nice because one plus two plus three is divisible by three. One is also nice. How many nice numbers are there in the set? One, two, three, and so on, till 2019?"
Oh, only to 2019.
So you guys can work together on them.
Jane, you're my teammate. It's hard without a calculator.
It's hard with a calculator.
I'd much prefer, like, y equals two times x minus negative c.
I know, I thought he was the math whiz down the end, too. Wasn't he good at math? That was his thing.
That's what he always played.
Right.
He's got his shoes on.
I married a banker, so I'm not the math whiz in the house.
The perimeter.
Oh, yeah. Okay, good. The kids do, they use their phones.
I know. We're gonna let you phone the seventh grade if you want, or you...
Blaney, put it over there.
I can do that, yeah.
Could you do this, Chuck?
Chuck can't do this.
Chuck probably can't. Can you do it?
I overanalyze these things.
No.
Can I have next slide, please? So the answer would be 1,010.
That's what I had.
I was off by one.
No, it's on, yeah. So that's on, off, on, off, right?
See, there you go.
Ah.
Yeah, good now. No, the answer's right there.
Nice mean, nice mean.
You all are in all incredibly impressive. You, it didn't take long to make us feel silly with these sheets in front of us. Good job. And, you know, previously, we were talking to some athletes just before you, and know differently than athletes, I know you all, for competition, put in lots of time, lots of practice, and lots of work, and I'm glad that you get to go to a competition like this and get recognized and get the, you know, get, get some wins and have some fun together as a team. So great job, great job. And math is growing, I guess, more and more importantly in the world by the day, you know, science and technology, and, you know, all the, a lot of the ways that that can be utilized here at Rockland High School. So great job, we're proud of you. I'm sure some other members of the committee have...
Jumping on what Dan just said, quick show of hands, how many of you guys do other activities outside of school, sports?
All right.
So you guys did all of this on top of what you do for sports. I mean, I know what you do at the rank, how many hours you're there, and so I'm factoring something similar for all of these guys. That's amazing, guys. And hats off.
Where are the guys? There's two guys.
They're tucked in the corner by the camera.
You know what those guys are?
Chuck, you can move over.
You know what those guys are? It's not those guys in the room, right? There you go.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Good job.
Well done. Keep it up.
Very impressive.
Thanks for being here. And thank you, Mr. McDonald and Mrs. Capoletti Howes, great team leaders. What a lot of people don't know is that Mr. McDonald can hit a half-court jump shot at the buzzer, too.
Yes, with three people hanging on him.
As he proved the other night. Well, next on tonight's agenda, now that we've been made to look quite silly...
Can we get a history club in here or something like that?
Under old business, we have some completed fundraisers to talk about. We have two that did, were very successful. The National Honor Society had a trivia night, they raised $1,614, and the Rockland High School Travel Club had a prize calendar, they raised $3,580. Outstanding job by all. Great job. Next up, under new business, we have some requests for approvals of new fundraisers. The Rockland High School Boys Lacrosse Team have a couple that they're proposing. In April, they're looking to do a meat raffle. In April, they're also looking to do some spring cleanups. So we'd look to have two motions of approval for Rockland High School's lacrosse team's fundraisers.
Two motions to approve.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much.
And they will be getting a phone call to clean up my yard.
Absolutely. Good time of year for that. Next up, on our agenda tonight is school choice. Dr. Cron, you have some comments on the information the committee has in front of it?
Just wanna keep, just wanna keep the committee apprised of where we stand as far as open spaces, available spaces in our schools for school choice. Esten kindergarten is filling up fast. Again, I would encourage people to come and register for kindergarten, but that's, that's all we wanna do, is update you so that you're in the loop as far as how we're doing on school choice and where we have available slots.
Excellent. How are our numbers at kindergarten registration?
Kindergarten numbers are excellent. They're as high as they've been, they're higher than they've been at this point in, in the year, so we're around 160.
Great news. Great news.
And if Esten is full, do they then still can come in and go into Jefferson?
They can still come, yeah. What we're, what we're trying to do is, is create as balanced a...
A number of scans.
The number as we can. So, we don't promise with kindergarten that you'll be in your neighborhood necessarily. We may, for numbers' sake, be forced to have someone be in a different school, but we try, whenever possible, to keep them in the same neighborhood where they'll be for first grade.
They're all transported anyway.
They're all transported anyway, correct. Yep.
Very good. Thank you for the information, Dr. Cron. Next on tonight's agenda is the vote to dispersal of some surplus equipment. Any comments on any of the equipment that is surplus, Dr. Cron, or how the community could access it?
Just, just to guarantee everyone that if Mr. Wells wants to surplus something, it has outlived its life expectancy.
Sure.
So, yeah, if anyone wants to contact us about items that are being surplused and has an interest in them, they could call us at the high school at 871-8415. Again, 871-8415.
They have a typewriter available.
Oh, we do. Don't, don't try to take Mrs. Ellis's typewriter. I'll tell you that right now. I'll tell you that right now.
Very good. Very good. We have a motion to approve the surplus.
Motion to approve.
Great. We have a second? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next up on tonight's agenda, we have the superintendent's evaluation update. Dr. Cron, do you have any comments about it?
I do. I just wanted to walk, this is as much for me to keep myself on track as it is for the committee, but I did want to check back in with you on my evaluation timeline and some of the work that's being done. So, I did want to just walk you through a few slides. I won't read the entire goal to you, but this goal has to do with implementing the strategic plan and what I promised to do to achieve that goal. And so far, so far what I've done is, to date, I've met with the subcommittees, each of the subcommittee's leadership twice, and I have used the action plan tracker. So, we're all using an action plan tracker to update our progress. And I have had one formal meeting with each subcommittee chair to review their expectations. I really left each of those meetings feeling much more confident that our strategic plan is being implemented and it really is guiding the improvement process. So, I give you an example here. Colleen Forlisi, our superintendent, assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, has completed a thorough district-wide curriculum inventory and hopes to by the end of the year be able to post that online. Now, the purpose of that tool is so that college admissions folks could take a look at our curriculum, parents could look at our curriculum. If someone knows that they're going to be out for a week, they could go online, see what topics are going to be covered that week when they're out. So, our goal is to have this all completely online as an active living document. I think, again, we aspire to be a top-shelf school district, and these are the kinds of tools that top-shelf districts have available for their students and their families. So, it's just one example, and it clearly is being driven by the strategic plan. My second goal has to do with working with the principals and the senior leadership team to improve their evaluation skills. So, I promised to do some professional development workshops with our principals to improve their skills. I promised to do three. I've already done five or six, and I think they're a little, probably getting tired of it, but it's excellent work. We've had some just great discussions about some of the subtleties of working with people. When people teach and you want to evaluate them and give them critical feedback, the one thing that you can never overlook is how personal teaching is to a teacher. And it really requires tremendous emotional intelligence on behalf, on the part of our principals, to work effectively with, from a brand-new teacher to someone who's been doing it for 30 years and you're still trying to make them better. So, we've had part of our bi-monthly meetings. We have done some pretty substantial professional development. And I also did, at the start of this year, we did a self-reflection work, basically a survey that I was able to find that measures how good the principals think they are at this work right now. And I'm hoping when they take that same evaluation again toward the end of the year, that I'll be able to see, and they'll be able to see, that maybe they've made some improvements in how they feel about their skills as an evaluator. So, that, again, I think is very much on target. My third goal had to do with student participation in STEAM, computer science coding and robotics. I began, so these are, again, the things that I promised to do. I began by meeting with Tim Wells, Lisa Ryan, Colleen Forlisi, and Jane to discuss, to really sit down and say, what are our goals around technology for the district? So, that's really a two-part question. One is, what's the infrastructure and hardware that we need to have in place so that we can do the things we need to do? Then, there's a giant separate question, which is, what sort of coursework and curriculum are students, or students need K to 12? So, we had some very, very good conversations. We decided to select, really, as a guiding principle, the SAMR and tech guidelines. It gives you something to evaluate yourself against. They're also tied very much, very much to Bloom's Taxonomy. So, SAMSR stands for substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. It's a very, I don't know what their acronym, how they come up with them, but anyway, the idea is we want to be sure that what we're implementing is research-based and has some cohesion to it. So, then, we held a second meeting with the senior leadership team to talk about the work that we had done in the first meeting. And finally, just by way of update, our STEAM teachers and Lisa Ryan are engaged in the second year of sort of a revised curriculum, so it's becoming more efficient. I think they're covering, able to cover more material with the kids. And again, as the kids now are in their second, third, fourth year of this type of curriculum, their skills are growing. So, all signs are positive as far as increasing STEAM in the district. The fourth goal is around the building project and tracking information, being involved with the building project, participating, and providing updates to the school committee. To date, I've attended all of the meetings, worked with the Rockland School Building Committee. We've met all of our deadlines with MSBA. MSBA, we've been, we're on track, and we are entering now the schematic design phase of the project. So, again, I feel as though I'm on track with this goal. The fifth goal is district improvement and model for the five schools' successful tabletop exercises for crisis response. So, that is working with the principals so that they're comfortable and confident and attend meetings. To date, I've coached each principal on how to facilitate these exercises. I'm working, I've attended building-based emergency management teams at two of our five schools, and I have the last three scheduled. I've been very impressed with the work of the building-based teams. It's one thing to sit with a district-level committee that has the fire chief, bless you, and the police chief involved in this work. It's another to see what's going on on the building level and to see the teachers that are involved in this work. And then, I've held follow-up meetings with the principal after to give them feedback on how I thought those meetings went. And the only thing that I've had to point out in those meetings was really this idea. I very much want our building-level emergency management teams to be patrolling their buildings on a regular basis. I want more of our staff just having a critical eye for, is there a door unlocked? Are these windows ajar? Is something broken? Is there something out of place? And I figure the more faculty and staff that we have involved in doing this on a regular basis, the safer we'll be. But overall, I've been very pleased and feel that I'm on track to complete this goal. But I just wanted to bring the evaluation process back to the committee so that you're seeing it again. I want you to know that I'm thinking about these. And again, I selfishly did a lot of this for myself so that I make sure that I'm keeping my promises.
Well, I think this is actually wonderful best practice, to be honest with you. I think it's very helpful, for you maybe, but it's very helpful for this committee. But I think it's very beneficial for our community to see the good work that's being done in our schools more than once and to see the progress and the hard work that you and Ms. Forlisi and Jane Hackett here are doing. You know, things are really going well in Rockland Public Schools. You know, as raised by, we just went through the financial reports. We looked at your goals. You know, this isn't a place that I can see that you are allowing anybody to rest on their laurels. Despite things going really well, we continue to self-assess. We continue to modernize, and we continue to make Rockland Public Schools the best place for a rigorous education for every kid in town. So, thank you for that. I think that was really helpful.
The only comment I have, would like to make is that, I mean, just keeping up with STEAM, how fast that stuff is changing.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
It is. It's just accelerating.
It is.
You know, exponent, exponentially.
Absolutely. It's great. It really is.
And it's just in the same year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I see that.
We have, again, I know I give a lot of credit to Lisa Ryan because she deserves it, but I think we have the perfect person sort of on the vanguard of that. You know, she's very in tune with what's going on and tries very much to say, hey, this is new.
Right.
And let's get involved in it. And she finds very inexpensive, if not free, ways to do that. So, we're very fortunate. I feel fortunate to have her on our team.
But even integrating it into, you know, whatever subject, because it's in all the subjects now.
Right.
You know, it's all there. But integrating it, how fast it have to change, and getting a buy-in from the other teachers, you know, or anybody in the building.
Well, to that point, in your reports, you may have read, you know, in the math department, they use this software program called Grade Cam Insight. Essentially, what it allows a teacher to do is to correct an entire class's papers just like that and project that data so that it could be used with the rest of the class, just like that, instantaneously. But then, I went on to the history, the history monthly report, and they're also using it. So, to your point.
And that's all of the form.
That's right. To their point, to your point, it's, this technology integration is happening in not just the classes you'd think it's happening in. It's happening in history as well.
Right.
And kudos to our teachers for being open to that because it's a lot of work for them to learn.
For some teachers, that's a big buy-in.
No doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even more on the STEAM on the lower level of the schools, in the elementary. The two teachers we have, I can't hear enough about them from, not just my kids, but every kid that has, you know, Mrs. Mack or Mrs. Hogan.
Yeah.
And they can't speak enough of how great they are, how fun. They love, when they look at their block and see that it's a STEAM day, they're over the moon to have it that day because, you know, when I'm watching my kindergarten or program and code of a mouse that's doing things, I'm going, huh? Like, how? You're six.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Nobody told them.
Nobody told them they were only six, you know?
Right. It's normal to them. It's just not.
And, you know, the other piece of, you know, your progress evaluation that you talked about a little bit, that I think is a bit of a good segue into the next agenda item, but before we do pivot to that, your work that, your, a lot of hard work that you're doing relative to our building committee and the building project that we have here going on in town, that's sort of a full-time job, even aside from your full-time job. And the community should know that that is going very, very well, not only the work that you're doing, but the school building committee under the leadership of Mr. Penny. It's really a very thoughtful and intricate process, and the committee and you were doing a great job on it. So, with that, it's, like I said, it is a very good pivot and segue into our next agenda item, which is the building project land transfer. Dr. Cron, do you have some information for the committee on this?
I just wanted to point out, wanted to make sure that we talked about this. As part of this, as part of the proposed Jefferson School project, the preferred site, as we talked about last time, is on what's called the Oval. It's known to most as the Oval. The land transfer details are, it would be 7.49 acres going to the schools from the Parks Department. That is land located in the Oval area, and a total of 11.34 acres being transferred from the schools to the parks. The memorial park, where the land that we are looking at acquiring from the Parks Department is pictured here, 7.49 acres. Giving is the current memorial park site and the land associated with parking that goes, that's in that area. And Jefferson, the Jefferson site as well. And so, I just wanted to be sure, I know that you're informed about these things, but I wanted to make it, you know, sort of a public record that this is what we're doing. Want to thank the Parks Department for their unanimous support of this project. They had to vote unanimously to support this, and we appreciate, we appreciate their hard work and their support. But that's it. That's all I wanted to share. I wanted to make sure that you saw exactly what we're doing. I don't think the school has ever been in the owning land business. You know, it's not really our job to own land. But I think the Parks Department does a wonderful job with the limited space that they have control of, providing spaces for our kids and playing fields and so on. So, I appreciate the passion with which they do their work. They really care about having enough space for our kids to play, and they do, they do a lot of important work around town.
Sure. I think that's part of what makes our community special, is I think that the folks in department heads and departments all realize that it's really not school land or park land. It's all town land, and it's all town money, and we're all in this together. And it's one place, and we're trying to make our community a better place. So, thank you to the folks on the Park Department for their work and their unanimous vote on this and for the great job that they do for us every single day. And I think the motion that we'll be looking for on this agenda item would be a request for approval of a special town meeting, excuse me, I'm just getting ahead of myself, a request for approval of a land transfer that would be rescinded with an unsuccessful vote for building a new elementary school for the town, by the town of Rockland.
I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make the motion contingent upon the funding and completion of the project.
Correct.
Correct.
We have a second? All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
And I just wanted to add that how huge it is that we don't have to buy land from somewhere else to be able to, be able to do this school, too. That it's a huge gain, that we can just shift and work together.
Nor do we have to worry about swinging, bless you, swinging kids from one part of a, from one building to another building to another building.
And trailers and everything else.
Absolutely.
The fact that the land is there and we're getting to just switch it in that instant is big.
Absolutely. That's a great point.
Yes, absolutely. And I think, you know, I hope that when it does get completed, that whole area just flows together.
Correct. Like a hub.
Yeah, it's a, you know, the hub of education.
A hub of Rockland.
A crowning achievement for the town.
Right.
No doubt about it.
It's a pretty great dream for us all to aspire to.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, next on tonight's agenda, we have a request for appro, oh, we didn't take a vote on that, did we?
No.
So, you made the motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda, we have a request for approval of a special town meeting article, which I will read, and then, Alan, if you have some comments about it. Will the town raise, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $300,000 to fund the cost of unanticipated special education costs or take any action thereto? Dr. Cron?
Just, we had an unanticipated spike in our special education out-of-district costs, and we're asking the town to help us with that this year. And so, I got this article in under the wire when they were due, but I am asking for the school committee to vote and support this.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item eight, under Personnel Information. Dr. Cron, is there anything that you have to highlight for February, March?
I am always sad to see people go. I'm especially sad to see Sharon Pigeon leave us from the Jefferson School. She's a paraprofessional, outstanding, outstanding teacher. And I'm also sad to see Lauren Rosati leave the high school as a math teacher at the end of this school year. Wonderful young lady, wonderful soccer coach, and we will miss her. But we'll miss all of the folks who are leaving us, but I especially wanted to highlight those two.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. Last but not least on tonight's agenda is our public service announcements. And ladies first, as always, we'll start with our student representative, Ms. Jasmine Morse.
Well, I mean, the year's kind of coming to an end soon, so. Just keep going strong, I guess. I mean, it's already March, almost April. I mean, finals coming up. Just keep on the ball with everything, making the end of the year great.
Getting to be a busy time of year for you all.
It's crazy.
I noticed a flyer on the way in, prom tickets for sale, all this good stuff.
Everything. And then, we have the Europe trip coming up, too.
Best time of year. Enjoy every minute of it.
Right. It goes past. You'll be looking back.